...November 13th, 2018, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please, Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day you've given us, thankful for all the many things that we have here, especially this county that we have. Father, we ask a special prayer this evening for those out in the Christiana Midland area that last week suffered a terrible storm. We ask that you be with them, that you watch over them, protect them, and also give us the ability to help them in any way. A special prayer, Father, for the Walker family, loss of life, we ask that you be with them at this very touching time of their life. Father, we ask that you be with us this evening as we make decisions that affect this county, that you give us the ability to do the right things and look towards the future planning of this county. Be with us all, watch over, protect us. We offer a prayer in His own name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, proud, and indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. You may be seated. All the world, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Lee Bogle.
David Jones.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Craig Lynch.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Mike Vought.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Form.
Thank you, Gail. We need to read and/or approve our minutes from our June 25th meeting. Since Mike Kush couldn't be here tonight, he's out of town on business, I've asked a long-term Commissioner Mike Vought to look at those minutes. Mike, do you have a recommendation?
I've reviewed the minutes and found them in order and recommend their approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our June 25th, 2018, meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. The motion carries. Thank you. No items withdrawn or deferred?
Correct.
Item 6A, items that are submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6A118-1013, Primbrook Estates, four lots on 6.98 acres, zoned RM, located on Stewart's Creek Road. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well this evening. This plat before you is preliminary plan is north of the property recently approved for the Pembroke Farms subdivision. Three of the lots, being lots 1 through 3, will be served by the step system for the Pembroke Farms development. The fourth lot, the largest of the four, as you see there, will be on a conventional septic system. These plats are also on your iPads if you're not able to see them on the screen. There were several issues identified during staff's initial review. Pretty much the bulk of those comments have been addressed. We had a few remaining comments on our second review, and subsequently those have been addressed as well, so this plan is in good order. We'll be seeing the final plat for this particular development a little later on in the agenda. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18-1013 for Primbrook Estates. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B, submitted for final plat approval, 6B118-2123, tiny town north, three lots on 2.96 acres, zoned RM, located on Compton Road. Donald Bruce is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Planning Commission members may recall this property was the subject of a rezoning request back in 2017. It was a request for commercial services, which was ultimately denied. The current owner is proposing to split this property into three separate tracts, as you see on the plat before you. These are all going to be residential lots. There were only a handful of comments that we identified during our initial review. Those comments have been addressed. This plat is in good order, and we would recommend approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with staff calling.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you, Charlotte. We have a motion and a second to approve Primbrook Estates, item 18-2126. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. I'm sorry, that was Tiny Town North, wasn't it? Okay, I gave you the wrong one. That was Tiny Town North, 18-2123. Got ahead of myself. Guys are going to have to excuse me. I'm recovering from a cold, and if my voice doesn't hold up, I'm gonna have to get someone to sit in, but I think we'll make it. Now, submitted for final plat approval, 6B218-2126, Primbrook Estates, four lots on 6.98 acres, zoned RM, located on Stewart's Creek Road. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As I alluded to earlier, under preliminary plan approvals, this is the final plat for Pembroke Estates. We typically don't see final plats considered at the same meeting with preliminary plans. The reason for that is that in our regulations, we do require approved construction drawings to be submitted and approved by staff before you'll see the final plat. In this case, there really isn't a whole lot of utility work to be done. It's fairly minimal, so construction plans aren't required. But typically, that's not the case, so that's why you're seeing this. It's a little unusual, but it meets our regulations in that respect. I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up. Similar to the preliminary plan, we did have a number of items that we identified during the initial review, but those comments have been addressed. And again, this plat is also in good order, so we would recommend approval of this plat as well.
Thank you, Doug.
I have a motion and a second to approve 18-2126 for Primbrook Estates. Any other
questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B318-2127, Hilliard Estates, combination plat, one lot on 11.6 acres, zoned RM. This includes a dedication of the right-of-way.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The plat that you have before you right now is just a combination plat. The plat in and of itself is in good order. The reason it's coming before you tonight is due to the right-of-way dedication. We don't really have any additional comments beyond what we had already identified, and those comments have been addressed, so we would recommend approval of this plat combination. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That the reason that it's coming before us is just for the dedication of the right-of-way? Thank you, Doug. We have a motion and a second to approve Hilliard Estates, combination plat, 18-2127. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition to that? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B418-2128, Lewis Downs, Section 5, 22 lots on 45.09 acres, zoned RM, located on Alex Walker Drive. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This plat, as you stated, is part of the next section of Lewis Downs. Along with the residential lots, an existing property line is being shifted to expand the step lot area of Lot 91. We had identified several comments with this plat, but most of those comments were housekeeping in nature and have been addressed. There is one outstanding comment, and this is really just more for, I'm not so much worried about the comment being addressed, but just so that the Planning Commission understands. As of the last revision that we received, the hydrant, fire hydrant locations had not yet been shown on the final plat. As long as that's done prior to recording on the Mylar, then that's not a problem, but I just make that that's really the only outstanding comment that we have. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. This all drains to a regional pond for Lewis Downs to the, I guess, north on the plat.
No, sir, not that section, no. It will tie to the existing storm drainage network and then flow into the existing pond.
Mm-hmm. Keeps continuing up to the north. Yes, sir. I believe that once it's on the north side of Walnut Grove Road, past Clearview, it becomes a blue line stream.
Other questions?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Lewis Downs, Section 5, 18-2128.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6C, we have one item that's scheduled for a public hearing, and that's an amendment to our zoning ordinance for mail kiosk.
Before we do that, could we do the suspension of the rules to put that one on?
Sorry, I missed that, Doug. Thank you. Hope that you have this add-on in front of you. If you don't, let me read it for you. We'll need to suspend the rules to add on one item under the final plats. Can I have a mention to, can I have a motion to suspend the rules and a second? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Okay, this is, will be item 6A516-2073 for Maplewood. It's one lot on 1.01 acres, zoned RM, located along Elum Road. Wallace Maples is the applicant. This includes a waiver to the off-site soils provision. Sorry, I missed that, Doug.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This plat was actually approved by the Planning Commission back in November of 2016. Of course, final plat approvals are only good for six months, so this plat has expired. The applicant has brought this back forward to, actually brought it up to the office the other day to go ahead and get it signed and recorded, which is when we found out that it had expired. Nothing on the plat has changed. The reason it's coming before you is because of the off-site soils on the property. The applicant is proposing to divide this acre off of the parent tract, and I believe is for family member, if I remember correctly. So it's a pretty straightforward plat. Nothing has changed. We recommend approval. It just needs to be reapproved.
Thank you, David. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item 16-2073 for Maplewood. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Now, item 6C, we have one item that is scheduled for a public hearing, and that's zoning ordinance amendment for mail kiosk. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. On your iPads, as well as on your agenda packets that we emailed you, we emailed you this separately, we have the proposed regulations that we went over about a month or so ago for the cluster box unit or CBU regulations, what I'll just call mail kiosks, for lack of a better word. You'll recall that the reason this was brought up in the first place was the United States Postal Service is starting to move to centralized mail delivery in new subdivisions, even subdivisions that have started construction but maybe have not recorded any lots yet. This would apply to any subdivision with eight lots or greater. Staff has taken some time and has done some research on these particular regulations that other communities have. This is fairly new, at least for our area, but there are other areas of the country that have been dealing with this for a number of years. So we are able to find a number of different ordinances, and it really, a lot of it can run the gamut as far as how detailed you want these regulations to be as far as the design of the units and those type of things. But we decided to do this, we thought, we tried to keep it as general as we could to allow flexibility for the developers and how they deal with this, but we did want to see certain things that were consistent through all of them. So what you have before you today is kind of the culmination of that. The first page is really just the units themselves. Well, I guess that's the first two pages. It spells onto the second page just a little bit. And then the third page, and a little bit on the fourth page are related zoning amendments, so we'll kind of go over those here in just a moment. The biggest changes to the ordinance that you're seeing right here, to the amendments that we're proposing from our work session we had about a month ago, was really just adding in some language here to make it reference other areas of the code that we were changing. That was a lot of it. What you're seeing here, you know, and I'll just kind of go through these generally, just bear with me for a couple minutes. The first thing is anything that is installed, any associated improvements, those kinds of things, this is a, shall be the responsibility of the developer. This is part of the development process now, and it's going to have to be added in as just another thing that the developer has to take care of. We want to see approval installation of these units prior to the initial final plat being recorded for the development, creating residential building lots. If, I've got some reasoning behind that I won't go into right now, but if you want to know some of my reasoning, I'll be more than happy to share that with you. We would establish, require the establishment of a homeowners association so that developments within, or CBUs with developments, within these developments would have to be taken care of by the homeowners association. We don't want to see something that, you know, eventually the county, they think the county's going to take care of because we're simply not going to do that. Item D, CBU-related improvements, maybe on a lot of their own. That's something I think, after looking at the language, and Rhonda and I were speaking about this prior to the meeting, we might want to change the wording of that just a little bit. The reason being is we don't really want to see these on individual residential lots. That was kind of where we were going with that. But to just say CBUs have to be on their own lot just specifically, you might run into issues if they're on a lot with other amenities, like an amenity area in a planned development or something like that. So I think a little bit of rewording on D would be okay, just to say, you know, CBUs not on an amenity lot have to be on their own lot. I think that would take care of that, some wording to that effect. We would not want to see any improvements within the right-of-way or any utility easements unless written permission was granted by the easement holder. I'm talking not so much the parking areas, but I'm talking more along the lines of the actual boxes themselves, or the, like, any associated improvements. They had like a little pavilion over top of them, roof, something like that. We wouldn't want to see them in a vision triangle, which is defined in our ordinance. This is something that had some discussion during our work session regarding the improvements themselves. We had talked about the possibility, and when we first distributed these, we had some of the local engineering firms take a look at this, do a lot of development work for the county. They had suggested maybe allowing this to be done at construction, construction drawing stage, which is an administrative stage after preliminary plan approval, as opposed to having a site plan or having before preliminary plan approval. Based on discussion with the Planning Commission, at least for the time being, the consensus was the Planning Commission would like to kind of get their eyes on these until we develop more of a track record with them. So what we're proposing is that they'd be determined prior to preliminary plan approval, they could submit the site plan simultaneous with that preliminary plan submitted. So as you're looking at the preliminary plan for the development, you could also look at the, like, a small inset or site plan or something like that for the mail kiosk. So we could, we can work that out as far as how that's done. I don't know if it has to be a separate sheet necessarily, but if it's going to be part of the preliminary plan, it could just be a page in the preliminary plan document. I think that would be okay. And we list some of the different things that we would like to see, different elements, such as landscaping, lighting plan, parking. You can kind of see what we're proposing for the parking there. Parking spaces could be in a dedicated parking area, like a parking lot, if you will, or within a bulb out along the right-of-way, subject to approval by the county planning and engineering department, and also the highway superintendent. And then, of course, CBU-related improvements would have to meet all current Americans with disability ADA standards as well. We want to make sure that got in there. We also propose that CBUs would not have to be, have to meet the normal setback requirements. They could be exempt from that. They would have to beat all the USPS standards, as well as all applicable building and fire codes. And something else we talked about on J there on page two is the address numbering for each dwelling unit shall comply with the adopted building code for Rutherford County. Something else that we talked about, which I put in here that we would encourage, strongly encourage, would be some sort of like a monument, or pole, or other sign, like we showed, I showed some pictures at our last meeting, kind of at the right-of-way, which would help, you know, vehicles driving by, or delivery services, if you will, be able to identify the address if they couldn't necessarily see it on the house. And we would just make that consistent with the signage regulations. These kind of signs would be signs required by a local government agency, which are not required to be within a, not required to have a permit. So that's kind of the overview of the regulations themselves. The next couple pages just go over some related zoning amendments that go with that. We would add some language to recreation and cluster box units, facilities, being for the exclusive use of the residents. This would be under accessory use and structure provisions for accessory uses, and we would just label in there as well that CBUs are subject to the provisions in 1101-T, which I'll get to here in just a minute. We would add a new section under 404, which would exempt these particular type uses, the lots for these, to have to meet prescribed minimums in the article, which, again, if you're in the RM, you wouldn't have to be 15,000 square feet. If you're in the RL, you wouldn't have to be an acre, basically, is all that is. We would add just a little bit of verbiage to the actual chart itself, which just specifically calls out 404B, what we just talked about. Under supplementary district regulations, we would replace T, which was firework displays, open air burning, and illegal burning, with the cluster box unit mail kiosk regulations. Those regulations we just went over. The reason that we're bringing that particular section to T and removing it is because when we adopted the fire code, those regulations were removed from the ordinance anyway, and it's marked reserved. So that we're not, we're not losing anything. It's already gone. So that, quite frankly, where that would be listed, should have already been listed as reserved. We just forgot to do that part. So nothing is being changed really there. We would require, I'm sorry, in Section 1101C, permitted obstructions and required yards. We would allow these to be in any required yards. Also, we add a little something in there. This is something that we, actually, you can ignore that possibly into on that second bullet point. That was a note that I had, that can be ignored. But we wanted to put something in there about HVAC equipment, something that, something that Tanya Bell and I have been talking about, wanting to put in our ordinance so that it's clear that, we figured if we had a chance to make some changes, we'd go ahead and just lump that in there with everything else. That's unrelated to the mail kiosks. Structures to have access, this has to do with the lot width at the road, you know, the amount of road frontage at the road, which is normally 50 feet. This particular use, these lots would not have to meet that as well. And then the definitions, we would add that definition there for cluster box units to our definitions. So I'm sure that's clear as mud. We went through that kind of quickly, but if you've got any questions, I'll be more than happy to discuss them at this point. Since this is an ordinance amendment, it does require a public hearing here, and also a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners before. This can be added into the ordinance.
I've got a couple of things, Doug. On site plan C under parking, did we say we wanted to add something where you can't back out into the street?
No, we didn't want to see that. Now, that's not specifically called out here, but, I mean, these regulations that we have, the, I mean, it references our parking regulations, 1102. So, but that is something that we don't want to see typically. Now, there are a couple of, we have seen a couple of developments that were at the end of a coal attack, where it probably wasn't as big of an issue. So I don't know if I want to just say clear and simply, we don't ever want to see that, because there may be some situations, not many, but there may be a couple out there that it's, it probably is okay to do that. But I think that's something we can look at during the site plan. As we're looking at the review of that, we can look at and say, we don't want to see that. And quite frankly, Mike and I meet with people about new development, you know, that's one of the things we bring up now, is how you're going to handle mail kiosks, and we don't want to see backing out on the street and everything. So it's, it's very clear on the front end what we're looking for. I don't necessarily think it needs to be spelled out here anymore.
And then also, because this is new, and we're sort of massaging all of this, you know, what if we decide, whether it's your recommendation or ours, that it would, we feel like the neighborhood, because it's so large, that they'd be better suited for multiple kiosks instead of just one? Or, let's say there was some amenity package, and we felt like maybe parking wasn't going to be sufficient, and we needed to change the parking amount or whatnot. And I don't know if that's specific, I'm just trying to give you examples of times where it, it might meet the letter of the regulation, but the situation itself might be unique, and we might want to make a different recommendation. Is there anywhere that we can work into that? I guess just the application of, you know, our input or insight when we can design a better plan? That's my thing. I want to make sure we've left ourselves latitude to make a better plan.
Right. You know, could we add in something like that? I think it's possible that we could probably find a place to put that in, but considering that you do have the ability to approve these with the preliminary plan, I think you'll have that opportunity to do that anyway. I think some of this is really going to be worked out, really, before it ever gets to the Planning Commission, when we look at it, because they're going to come in and we're going to do our review first. They're going to have to tell us, okay, this is how we're handling mail. We're going to have a kiosk here, maybe a kiosk here, or we're going to have one big one right here. I mean, that's, that's going to be kind of incumbent on us to look at that and say, okay, do we feel that this is in the, is this the best design that you could do here? Or does it make more sense to break it up into other areas? And then ultimately, for your approval as well. So we could add something like that in here, just, you know, unique circumstances may require, maybe something on those lines, unique circumstances, or depending on the circumstance, it may require more than one kiosk, as opposed to, you know, like, a large development, like 500 homes. Rather than have it all at one place, it might make more sense to break it up into some areas. It might not be a bad idea to put some language in there just to say, in those situations, you know, we may consider alternate designs as opposed to just putting them in one. I think that could probably be added even, well, I'm not exactly sure what would be added, but I think we could add it in here, you know, at...
And then the last thing I had wasn't even about this, but it was the HVAC language that you were adding in.
Yes.
I just happened to recently have a conversation with someone who said that when they bought their house, the HVA system was in the front of the house, and they had landscaped around it. And so it just made me think, do we ever want to say it can't be in the front yard?
Well, I'll tell you what, let me, let me just open up my ordinance here. Turn to number 1101C. What we're proposing in this particular, this is in any rear yard for CBUs and then HVAC equipment. Now, there is a separate, there is a separate number two, the next section, subsection in this particular section, if you will, is just rear and side yards located behind the principal structure. We could move it, well, no, I said, we could move it there, as opposed to just in any yard, because I don't see a whole lot in front yards in the county, at least. And Tanya, you might be able to, you know, chime in if you know of any. But, you know, basically, all that, it's not saying that it can't be in the front yard in general, it just can't be within the front setback. When it's talking about required yard, that means the setback. So that might make more sense is to actually move that into a different section. So, I mean, we could do that, and that's, that's easy. Again, this isn't even related. It just, we saw an opportunity to make a change we've been wanting to make anyway. This gave us an opportunity to do it. So we can, we can do that.
Doug, in your discussions or contacts with other areas that have already used the mail kiosk, did you, did you get an indication of what a maximum size would be? Or is there a maximum size? You alluded to that earlier, and I'm just curious.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I didn't actually speak to anybody in any of these communities that I spoke, that I researched their regulations for. The regulations I looked at, I don't remember seeing anything that said it had to be no more than X amount of kiosks in an area before they would make them go to a different location. This is really going to be kind of a... This is really going to be kind of a coordination issue between the developer, the US Postal Service, and the county, kind of all working in tandem, if you will, to come up with the, with the best design. Generally, the, excuse me, the US Postal Service, they're not going to dictate necessarily what they have to look like, or how many you're going to have here, this and that, or the other, they just want to make sure that, they're just going to basically, instead of going to look at it and say whether or not it works, basically. That's what I've seen so far, is what they're going to do. So, but to answer your question, yeah, I haven't actually spoken to anybody. I did reach out to some colleagues in Tennessee, but nobody's really, we're all kind of in the same boat right now, dealing with this. So, unfortunately, we had a conference just a couple of months back, and one of the presentations was going to be on mail kiosks from the US Postal Service, but the person who was given the presentation got their day mixed up and didn't show up, so we didn't actually have the session, so that was disappointing. But, so, yeah, I guess the mail didn't go through that day, I don't know. But regardless, we're all kind of dealing with this in our own way. So, I've spoke with some of my colleagues that really aren't going to do anything different than what they're already doing as far as their subdivision developments, and, you know, I've talked with some that are just not quite sure how they're going to handle it. So, this is kind of our, our stab at it, you know, with any ordinance amendment that we do, of course, you know, if we start working it and find out it's not working, then we come back and make some changes, so.
Perhaps something in place, rather than nothing in place, will put us ahead of the game.
Yes.
And make things a little bit more clear, especially as we go down the road. I was in, on vacation in Florida a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, you guys have heard of this massive place called The Villages down there, and they've got these kiosks, thousands of them, all over the place. Every one of them look good. I went into another development that was mostly a trailer park, a modular home development, and it had a kiosk up that was tore open. It was terrible looking. So, I think kind of getting ahead of that game will be, will put us in a much stronger position than, rather than not doing anything. What happens, Doug? You know, we've got an HOA, maybe the development doesn't want an HOA, and is not required to have one, but we're going to say you got to have one. And what happens if the, after we get through with it, then the mail service, it's between the mail service and the, and the people who get mail, right?
Yes, sir, pretty much. If the, if those fall into a state of disrepair, I mean, at some point, the US Postal Service can just say, well, guess what, we're not going to deliver your mail anymore. If you want mail, you're going to have to go get a PO box, or you're going to have to fix all this. And, you know, we're not going to have any say in any of that, because, you know, we're not going to be responsible for maintaining any of these things.
So, our answer to people who will call us will be, it's just like a mailbox, we have no jurisdiction over a mailbox.
That's correct.
Nor over the kiosk either.
That's right. Yes, sir.
Doug, if we separate these lots off, are they a taxable lot within the county, then does the HOA have to pay taxes on the lot? I'm just curious.
That's a good question, I would assume that they would. I mean, these aren't, as far as I know, these wouldn't be exempt from any taxes.
They have amenities on a lot, is that a taxable lot?
As far as I know, it is, yes, sir.
HOA has to pay it as a group, or is it, I would assume?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's its own individual lot, and someone's got to pay the taxes on it, that's right.
Every county and every incorporated town or city in the county has to have, includes everyone, right?
I mean, yes. I don't know how they're, if it's, if, when they came and spoke with us, they were kind of making the rounds around middle Tennessee area. Now, I don't know how that relates to west Tennessee, or east Tennessee, or anything like that, but, I mean, eventually, we're all going this way, that this is, this is pretty much what they're doing, so we don't have a whole lot of choice in the matter.
Any other questions for staff before we have a public hearing?
I just have one last question. So, if the kiosk falls in disrepair, it wouldn't be the same thing as like grass being overgrown, where you could do some kind of a codes violation?
Annie, you want to take a stab at that?
That might be a way to address it, yeah, that could be an option. We would address it with the homeowners association, or whoever's responsible for the lot.
Where would that rule need to live, for us to be able to do that?
I'm sorry?
Where would that ordinance need to live in order for us to be able to do that?
Well, I think it already exists. I mean, that just falls under the zoning enforcement code and the existing property management, or maintenance codes that we already have. So, if there's a violation of something in the zoning ordinance, Tanya's folks in their zoning enforcement office already have the ability to enforce those, so I don't think anything special needs to be done beyond that.
Yep, yeah.
Any other questions, ready for our public hearing? At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open for our zoning ordinance amendment on mail kiosk. Anyone wishing to speak? You guys are all getting up at once, I can't, can't handle all of you. I see no one, so I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I want to thank Doug for his efforts on this, I think it's a, definitely a good first start, something that we can start with, that hopefully will, you know, serve us very well. To a lot of things Commissioner Allen brought up, I do agree with those, and I think those will work themselves out as we go through this, and, you know, I expect us to find some things we didn't expect, but, you know, like I said, we've got to start somewhere. And again, I applaud Doug and Mike and their staffs for putting this together for us, and I think it's something we can definitely move forward with right now, and, you know, taking and start using as soon as it goes through its paces. So, with that said, I do recommend approval of this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chip. We have a motion and a second to approve our new amendment to our zoning ordinance with mail, concerning mail kiosk. Any other questions?
And those are with the edits we discussed?
Yes, I mean, that, that's how I understood it, yes.
Other questions?
Doug, if we've set a master plan for a subdivision, it will not apply to the, and we've done one section, it will not apply to that, that subdivision, or will it?
Well, a lot of that's going to be up to the US Postal Service. We have seen situations, even now, where we've seen section one or section two approved of a development, section three comes in, and the US Postal Service has required a mail kiosk in section three, even though they're still doing curbside delivery on the other two sections. So, to sit, to say that we're not going to see that, it's, no, we are seeing that right now.
I just want to clarify that for us and the public.
Right. No, it's frustrating on everybody's part, I know, especially when a lot of these development and what we're running into right now are the infrastructure for the existing developments that are still continuing on in different sections, they weren't planned with this. You know, it made a lot more sense to us, we thought that, you know, anything new coming in now, you know, coming off the ground, preliminary plan approval, start with those, and just, you know, let the other ones finish up with the curbside delivery, but the US Postal Service doesn't see it that way.
We have no control, it'll be up to the postal service.
That's correct, we don't.
I'd just like to say that I can see that we have taken nothing and turned it into something, it looks like to me, because that's basically what we had here, is that they were going to do it, and I commend our staff for what they've done by doing this, and seeing where we go from here. I can see that it'll be a work in progress. Nobody knows where to go from here, and, and as we've seen so many times, that when it comes from the government, we never know where it's going to go from there. It's, it's under their power and their controls, like, hey, this is what we're going to do, and you work from there. So, I just want to say I commend our staff for what they have put together.
Thank you, thank you, Pettis.
Appreciate it.
I second that motion as well. Any other questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the motion to forward this on to the county commission, and I think that will be on the 13th of December, Thursday, the 13th of December. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition to that? Motion to approve, Karies, thank you. Any other business, Doug?
No, don't really have anything, just a couple of things to keep on your radar. Next month, we'll be appointing a nominating committee for chair and vice chair for calendar year 2019. Also, we've been furthering some discussions about the long-range transportation plan, and, you know, getting started, moving forward with that, with the possibility of maybe combining that with a upgrade to our comprehensive plan, an update to our comprehensive plan. So, just something to kind of think about, and, you know, we're excited about where this might go, so just stay tuned.
I didn't mark it off on my calendar, but I think our meeting for the 26th of this month, the Monday after Thanksgiving, has been canceled.
Yes, we didn't even advertise it.
You guys get a couple of weeks off, congratulations. Anything to bring before this commission?
For the Planning Commission? I think it's the 2nd, 9th, I think? 10th, it's December 10th.
December 10th, it'll be a 6:00 PM meeting here. We're trying to put together our annual Christmas dinner before that meeting, Mike. Anything else? Thank you for your time, your patience, and your attendance, we are adjourned.